Five thirty, have a quarter way in common workshop session over.
Now, we have two items for discussion, one would be the municipal setting designation, and the second would be rules related to the plaza. On the MSD, we want to take a little different approach tonight and really talk about it in relation to the establishment of an overall program. So, we're not talking about any specifics where any council members might have any type of conflict. So, we want to talk about a program in general and what can be achieved with such a program. Steve's going to walk you very briefly through that, and then Jack is also here if you happen to have any additional questions. Steve, do you want to?
Very quickly, on the MSD, what we're looking at, as Barry described, was how we take in new applications in the future, if they come in, and what you'd like to see set up. Again, the purpose for the MSD is to allow for improved opportunities for redevelopment in those areas that may have contamination from other events, the property owners, et cetera. And this also helps in making sure they're able to get their financing to redevelop some of these particular areas. Contamination can be from multiple sources, again, as we described at the last meeting. And again, we're looking at not a specific, but how if we receive these applications or requests in the future, a process by which we can receive that information, have them fill out a city application, bring it to you for consideration after staff has reviewed and provided you the necessary information in a timely manner, not to bring it to you immediately, but give it to you so you have time to research it, discuss it, and then act on it at that point in time. These are all the ordinance that we're looking at will basically be a guideline or a tool how to fill out that application, what the requirements are, and then come back to you on a case-by-case decision whether you approve, accept, or deny that application to be submitted to the state. Again, Jack's here, if you have any questions, if we've misstated anything, please speak up on that end. But tonight is just to give you some information whether or not you'd like us to proceed with development of an ordinance that will basically give an applicant the process, the procedures that he needs to perform, he or she needs to perform, to submit that information to the city.
And there's some good models out there, Arlington, Denton, Fort Worth, and so we would be looking at those model processes, determining what is pertinent for Lewisville and what we want to include. The application is probably one of the most important parts of the development of that process, so that we, the staff, has time to adequately review the impacts that the MSD might have on the surrounding wells, which is a key part of this process. So, at this point, we're just asking for direction to see if you would like us to go forward and have work with Jack on development of a process. We would bring that back to you in an ordinance format.
Questions or comments?
I don't know, we should be there at all.
Each individual one would be, or each case would be, on its own merit?
Yes, sir. Each one would, we would look at and review separately, and we would have an application that includes all the necessary information, and then we would bring a report to you and a recommendation on a case-by-case basis.
So, I see this basically as the private sector looking to us to mitigate some cost for environmental cleanup.
The major reason for an MSD or why a development would seek an MSD is a financing issue. So, morally, they have to have that type of clearance to get financing, and so that's why they look to the city. Under state law, you can't have an MSD unless the city approves that MSD.
So, we get to a point where it's either, it's possible we get to a point where it's either the city ends up cleaning it up, or nobody can finance to develop a space.
And so, it sits there and it remains, yeah.
No, but the city's not going to be, in my opinion, liable whether we approve or disapprove.
No, I don't, I wasn't coming at it from a liability standpoint, I was coming at it from a development standpoint.
I think TJ's question was, if the city were not to approve the MSD, what would happen to that?
To those kinds of properties.
To those kinds of properties. Well, there are other ways to try to get financing, there are other ways to deal with it. The MSD is the most time-effective and least costly of those alternatives.
It's also cleaning it up.
Well, then, yes, but then the question becomes, who cleans that up? Is the private sector going to clean that up? I mean, for the right property, maybe.
Well, but research-
There's lots of property in Texas.
For the research that I did, it goes back to the owner of the property, I believe, at the time that the accident or incident occurred. It doesn't go forward, is my understanding.
Okay, so we put that burden on the existing owner?
Yeah, the VCP, once you go into the VCP program and you get a certificate of completion after everything's done, that TCQ wants to see, you know, any owner after the one that applied for the VCP is released from liabilities. All future owners and lenders have a release of liability from the state for cleanup, but it would go back to the owner who was owning the property at the time it went into the VCP program if they wanted to come back on anything. But, so, it's the owner of the property that has the responsibility if there's any cleanup needed out, hopefully with the MSD, they won't have to go back and clean anything up.
So, when that owner, I'm just trying to extrapolate through that, so, I own a property, it's contaminated. One of my tenants blew out a whatever, and it's identified that I have a problem on this facility. It's my responsibility to pay X dollars, whatever that is. I don't want to pay it. I declare bankruptcy, property sits. Now, who cleans it up?
Well, you know, if it's not getting cleaned up, or if somebody wants to come in and buy the property and take on that responsibility, they could do it, you know, depending on how much the property's worth and location and all that kind of stuff, so.
Okay.
And it's possible it could go into some kind of state cleanup program if it was, you know, maybe impacting water wells or something, or the EPA could come in as well and take ownership.
But just, I'm just curious what all the permutations are on, I mean, it's nice to say that they haven't cleaned it up to this point.
Yeah, typically, it's up to the owner, or, you know, a lot of times, they don't clean it up unless they've got a buyer that really wants it to be cleaned up, or wants it to go through a voluntary cleanup program, or some type of program at the state. But, you're right, a lot of properties sit out there contaminated, and nobody's doing anything.
And that's one of the key permutations, is that they may never have to do anything. It may not be required.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of infected properties that they just don't know about, or they can't get to, or they don't have the funding to clean them up, so.
And cleanup is functionally unrealistic.
Yeah.
Well, it's been developed, and it's sitting there, and so you don't move forward any improvements.
But I think it's a very fine line, and you have to be very careful, I think, to do each one of them on a case-by-case basis, because, I mean, if not, you just don't plug gates, okay, you go contaminate your place, the city will clean it up, don't worry about it.
Right.
Tell the cleaners, don't worry about whoever's out there, don't worry about the oil, the film stations, don't worry about it, just contaminate, and the city will clean it up.
That's fair.
That's ridiculous, in my opinion, and bankrupt the city, I would think, in my opinion. It's similar to what we did with that piece of property owned Bel Air in Valley. We got a lot of complaints when that thing went bankrupt. It sat there, and sat there, and sat there, became an eyesore, it caused problems with the neighborhood people around, because there was a pool that was neglected for containing, gathering rainwater, and wasn't getting pumped out, mosquitoes were horrendous over there. I kept telling them the complaints I got about that on a regular basis, I'm sure y'all did too, city did too, on a regular basis. And people wanted us to clean it up, and that was, they wanted us to buy it and clean it up. But we could have it, and it'd cost the city several million dollars to do that. That was probably six years ago, seven years ago, and then, what, two years ago, a private developer came in and said, you know what, that money, that property is ours, I'll clean it up and do it myself. So, I think you have to be careful with each one of them. It can at some time, if it's out in the middle of nowhere, it may not be worth something somebody to do, but if it develops up around it, it's enough for some developer to come in there and clean it up. So, I think, careful that we make each one of them case-by-case.
I agree with that.
I think it is worthwhile for the city to have a developed program, so when they come to us, we're prepared, we have a process for review, and that's really what we're talking about.
Because we, just because we have the program, doesn't mean that they get it.
That's correct, sir.
But just to clarify, under what circumstances, if any, would it be the city's responsibility if they're not the property owner?
I don't know of any, maybe Jill might be able to answer that a little bit, and I am, I don't know of any case where the city has actually-
I can't either.
Yeah, unless you take it in on back taxes or something like that, I mean, if you're not involved, if you're not the property owner, and you're not responsible for the cleanup.
What's the policy's going?
Okay, anything else?
We'll move forward.
Okay.
We have an abbreviated version of the PowerPoint tonight. We went through some of the basic provisions for the guidelines. Now, we really want you to focus on four key areas, and James is going to actually walk you through the four decision points, and then, on your agenda, you can take about them.
Does that say 2025 down there? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, we're all in, we're all in. So, and then, based on those four points, we would ask you to give us formal direction out in the meeting.
I do have printed copies here, if anyone needed a printed copy of the presentation. So, based on the conversation from our previous workshop, we pulled out the four items that there seemed to be some question or discussion on, and I'll hit those pretty briefly, let you know the direction staff is looking at right now, and then, of course, receive council input as we finalize this. First is hours of operation, and the staff recommendation at this point is to match opening hours to other city parks, which is six o'clock. That way, there's consistency to all parks, if you have to have early setup, where people are riding early for work, wanting to, you know, have their coffee in the park while they look at their email, could do that. Closing time would be 11 o'clock during the week, 11:30 on Saturday and Sunday, and that coincides with the entertainment district. Now, we did not choose strictly the entertainment district, because entertainment district technically opens at noon, and we didn't think the park should sit there unopened until noon. And, of course, originally, we brought to you the standard park hours that closed earlier than this. So, this is a hybrid. We've spoken with Chief Kerbo, and he felt like his officers have no trouble enforcing it this way, they'd be aware of it. This would be the one park that's an exception to the other parks. So, we're looking at 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM during the week, 6:00 AM to 11:30 on Friday and Saturday. And, of course, for a rental or a city event, those hours could be adjusted on an individual basis. For example, Western Days ends at 11:30, but with the cleanup and everything else, we're in, we'll be in that park for two or three hours after the official closing time. Revisiting quickly, the list of prohibited items in Lewisville parks, and this is not a comprehensive list, these are the ones that we've heard people asking about, open flames, tapered candles and fireworks, that is standard for all city parks, fireworks is standard citywide. Glass containers is in your current ordinance. The question was raised, if someone wants to have a nice wedding out there, and they want to be able to serve wine or champagne to their guests, what do they do? And the answer is, just as it is in other city parks, they do it without using glass containers. They decant it into plastic bottles, they pre-pour it, somehow, they do that without the glass containers. If council wanted to make an adjustment to that, you could do it on individual variance basis, probably exception language in the ordinance would be the better way to handle it, which is make this location an exception. That's not staff's recommendation, partly because of cleanup and partly because of safety concerns. If someone's out there with a glass bottle and they break it, they might pick up the large chunks, but they're not going to get all the little slivers. And then, Bob's guys, maybe they find them, maybe they're mowing it, it throws glass up in the air, maybe some kid running around trips and falls on it. So, for cleanliness and safety issues, it's not our recommendation, but it's something we could work with if council wanted to go that direction. Tents and canopies are not allowed without a permit. Firearms prohibited unless you have a state permit, law enforcement or a CHL. And pets are allowed, must be kept on a leash. It says a six-foot leash, I think we're usually a little bit flexible on that, because six foot's not much of a leash for some dogs. You'd actually be riding your dog through the park, but must be kept on a leash, and owners must clean up after their animals. So, those are the same rules we have in place for other parks, and we would recommend retaining those for this location.
James, on the open flames, what's the problem if someone wanted to have a, you know, a vigil or something of that nature? What's the issue with, you know, the open flame, holding a candle or whatever?
The biggest issue is just the risk of fire and fire containment, safety and liability issues. Are there any other issues out there, Bob, that I'm missing?
That would be it. Could be potential grass fire.
It's primarily just a containment issue.
Well, yeah, that part of it, I understand, but I don't see it as a, you know, if somebody wanted to pay tribute to the veterans or whatever, you know, in support of some issue.
Well, we do have hard surface areas where that's been done, that's been done outside of City Hall, it's been done at other hard surface areas where there's not that risk.
Well, this is, it's kind of conflicting, really. We do have barbecue grills in the park, and, of course, we bag them if there's a countywide fire ban, and don't allow open flames at that time.
Right.
But we do have barbecue grills. As far as taper candles, that's not an issue in the parks, we don't see them, this is a different location, different setting. But there is a barbecue issue, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
The fire code does allow for candle use, too, as long as they're not drip, or the type of candles where you have something underneath it to contain the drips of wax. I mean, it is allowable by fire code, if you, those groups, probably, whatever.
Do you have interest to, did you want to change it, adjust this part, councilman, or are you interested in all part?
No, this is the park we're talking about, and, you know, it's kind of built to handle special events and that sort of thing. So, unless there's some really obvious or extenuating circumstances, if we need to achieve fire code provisions of no drip and whatever, I'd like to see the city revisit that one issue.
Couldn't have an issue with it except for the candle wax, we want to make sure that they were absolutely non-drip. I mean, you get that wax into the stone-
Well, I think, they don't have to be non-drip, as long as it's got a little paper thing around it.
Right.
I mean, our church does it, you see.
Yeah, I agree.
It just catches the wax, and it runs down the side of it.
I'd hate to get the staining and the damage to the stonework and whatnot.
Some type of protection.
Yeah.
Or I come back and slip.
You know, those kids on their skateboards, they like to wax the concrete so they slide better.
Thank you, James.
It's a lot of wax.
It is a lot of wax.
And the thing I have on the glass containers, I understand, pardon, except about, well, let me ask you this, right now, on MCL, we allow glass containers for weddings, right?
We do.
And that's a concrete surface.
Yes.
To me, a wedding, how do you decant or champagne?
Pretty boring.
Not well.
Yeah, and it's gone.
Yeah, I mean, I see people come out with the-
Once you decant champagne, it's no longer champagne, it's just flat wine.
Well, at the same time, when people choose a wedding venue, our experience has been, they look at the rules inside, which is more important to them, the rules for the venue.
Okay, and what I'm thinking is, if you put it where it was restricted for, like, weddings on, in the bottle of stuff, nowhere, you couldn't have glass, glasses that you're going to pour it into, does that make sense? You'd have to have the plastic glasses that you pour it into, but you could have the actual bottle of champagne, that would be my thing, just for certain events, what do you call it?
To be like permitted events.
Permitted events, yeah, permitted events. And that would be up to a permitted thing. And you could, I would think, at that time, if you permit, you could require that that glass, that those glass containers be kept in a certain area, restricted area.
How big a glass container are we talking?
Champagne bottle, I don't think, no thing I can think of, they're probably doing a lot of weddings.
Beer comes in bottles that size.
And I wouldn't recommend beer bottles.
So, we're going to allow wine, but not beer?
They say wine, it says champagne, it's working.
Ah, yes, sir. What about, what about that?
What'd you say about champagne is what?
It is wine.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Methode champagne is not wine.
It is wine that's fermented in the bottle.
I disagree with that.
I think we're getting off track.
We do.
I do, too.
About sparkling.
We can research options for that, it would require an ordinance change, because this comes out of the ordinance, so it would require an ordinance change coming through council, but we can research options there.
If y'all don't want to do it, we certainly don't have to do it.
I think it goes down a slippery slope, to use that argument.
I'm fine with it. If it's a permit, they have to come to the city, they have to get a permit, and we're already going to be looking at it.
So, we would bring ordinance back, too, that would make an exception for the park plaza, because we're only talking about the plaza ride.
That's what I'm talking about.
So, we would make an exception for the park plaza on a permit basis. So, you wouldn't have people out just with a bottle of wine, without-
Exactly, they couldn't have bottles out, like you said, even beer bottles, they couldn't have them out of a, even if it was a beer bottle, they couldn't have it out in the-
So, run that again.
Sectioned area.
We would bring the ordinance, because the ordinance right now says no glasses parks, so this is a park. So, we'd have to bring the ordinance back, and we'd have to have an exception for the park plaza for that provision, but we could do that on a permit basis.
Okay, so, depending on the applicant and their, what they're asking to do.
Yeah, if they're going to have, if there's a wedding, anniversary celebration, then they could ask for a permit, so that they could have a glass bottle for serving purposes, not for a person. We'd have to work with Liz on the language.
Yeah. Beer growlers.
If they do, restricted to a certain area, my thought would be, like-
If the event is being held in a certain area of the park.
Right, and then, your glass container can only be in the, whatever you call it, where the beverage is served, or something like that, kind of like we do at the MCL, basically, they don't walk around selling it, it's in a fixed, located area.
We could do that within the parameters of the permit, right, the easiest way to do that.
Do you want to put a fee on that?
Can I go back to the question I was trying to ask a moment ago?
It does have an additional fee.
Additional fee.
Consider that, so.
Perhaps additional to the security.
To the security, yeah, could increase the security.
You mean for glass?
For glass.
I don't know, it's going to cost me more labor to go clean it up if there's a mess, I got to keep an eye out for it.
Can I go back to the question I was asking a moment ago? As for the language, are we putting any restrictions on what is in the container?
I would say no, I think that gets into a lot of complexities. I mean, you're really dealing with issue of glass, not so much what's in the place.
Well, with legal substances.
Yes, no cocaine in those bars. Do I not get upset with that?
Nice try.
Okay, right into the next category, alcohol. Currently, city ordinance prohibits possession of alcohol in any city park, except for certain locations or events designated by council. You see the language there. And you might recall, we came in and cleaned up this ordinance language at an earlier meeting, previous meeting, I believe, to make it an action of council, which validates the policy you already have in place. Now, the list of locations under council adopted policy where alcohol can be served or sold does not currently include Old Town Park Plaza, there was no such venue at the time that list was created. So, our recommendation would be that we come back to you next month to make an amendment to that policy that would add Old Town Park Plaza to the list of places where alcohol can be served or sold. Still require the same permitting process, however. We don't want it to be alcohol any time of day for any purpose, just sit there in the grass and drink to your heart's content. Our recommendation is that it be for permitted events or city events. You do have the option of allowing it in all uses, you have the option of saying no alcohol at all, which is what the current ordinance says anyway.
Fine with the recommendation, but the permitted, permitted or city event?
Then we would come back in November, I think Melinda's already working on that policy, we'd come back with language for that policy in November.
We want to look at in the future, not this tonight, but in the future, possibly doing something to our, we talked about the last meeting, about being legal to have it on the sidewalk. Since we're going to open this up and be kind of an entertainment retreat, I think, where you don't have people walking down sidewalks and streets with beer, or champagne or wine.
Mayor, we could bring that back to, to outline the options for you on that, if you'd like.
So, currently, it's illegal in the park, but it's okay on the sidewalk, correct?
That was the point I brought up last time.
And that's any park.
James, do you find there's a provision, it's actually a TABC rule, where you can actually designate your full town area to be where alcohol would be illegal in your Old Town area, under TABC rules, and that's about as far as we've researched that. So, I want to do a lot more research.
Now, I'm not talking about disallowing it in the parks, but just basically keep it going from place to place.
Container.
Container.
Right.
When we bring back that policy, we could certainly bring back those options for you to consider.
Austin has done something, they used to, and they don't anymore.
There's actually one citywide, but there are a number of cities, such as Dallas, that have gone with that central business district approach.
Okay.
There's about 20 cities around the state where open container is not allowed in the central business district, but is allowed elsewhere, and that's through TABC. The other option is the city ordinance that just says, no open container on public grounds.
It's me, I could get real confusing if we don't do something.
We'll bring that back to you, Mayor, in November, with some options.
So, moving to smoking, currently, smoking is prohibited in size city facilities, the only full outdoor area where it's prohibited is the courtyard at MCL Grand, we've made that a part of the facility. Council did that because of the sounds of Lewisville concerts in the courtyard. Generally, it's allowed in outdoor parks, but council policy does restrict it at certain locations, you can see the list there, athletic complexes, dugouts, benches, playing fields, restrooms, pools, essentially areas where there's going to be a close assembly of people that have to be there for the purpose of that particular park use. So, currently, there'd be no restrictions in the plaza. Our recommendation is that smoke can be allowed in the park with any other outdoor use, but with some exceptions, that would be noted by signage. One is the splash pad and children's play area, very similar to a playground or athletic complex. We believe that within 15 feet of that should be a no-smoking area, which we can put up permanent signage. And the other is within 15 feet of the great lawn and the boundary of that oval-shaped grass, when there is a public performance being conducted on the stage, just like the Sounds of Lewisville concert currently. Remember, that's the reason MCL Grand Courtyard was added to the smoking prohibited list, was because of those concerts. So, this would carry that same status over to the grounds of the plaza in the oval, and rather than put up permanent signage, we would develop a temporary signage package we would put up anytime that type of event took place. It'd be the same 15-foot boundary to be consistent with other restrictions that we have.
James, why don't you pull up, you have the card.
I do. It's right here. So, you can see the grass oval in front of the stage, this wouldn't include the wedge off to the side, but the grass oval there in front of the stage, during a public performance, we would put signs up 15 feet away from that boundary saying, no smoking beyond this point. And then, where up here in the top left, where the kids' play area and splash pad are, that would be signed for no smoking permanently. And then, the rest of the park would be treated like any other park. If you're in the grass wedge, or you're in Ferguson Plaza, you can indulge in your smoking habit.
Would it be simpler to just make that on a regular basis? Your same recommendation, but not only when you're having a performance?
Just make smoking prohibited in the park?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 in those areas that he just suggested.
Oh, at all times?
In the oval? Yeah, in the oval and the kids' play area.
Kids' play area would be permanent.
Right, is permanent, and then the oval.
It would just be a matter of putting in permanent signage, that would be in the park.
If you put the thing back up there, that still leaves you, at least half of your park you can smoke in, and about half you can't. That was my thought there.
Make it silent.
And in, in that way, it might be less confusing, up and down, you're in there one week, and you smoke there, and next week you go, there's a concert, oh, now you can't smoke there. See what I'm saying?
But it might get worse.
I don't know, it's just a thought.
Is it Frisco prohibited smoking in parks?
All parks.
All parks.
And you can't, I was just looking, give it best.
I think that, that's fair. And it reduces the, may reduce some of the signage issues.
So, permanent in the grass oval. We have to develop a signage package, but that's easy enough to do.
Just my thought. To me, it'd help keep down confusion.
I agree with you there, so.
I like that line of thinking for glass bottles, too.
And that also, when we come back with policy 4.0, there will be language included in that amendment also to address smoking at this facility.
And that includes vaping, too, illegal vaping.
You will have the opportunity at that point to also address vaping at city parks and facilities.
You want to treat it the same.
We treat it the same for the courtyard.
We don't. No, we do not currently. What we do at the MCL Grand, the vaping devices, because they light up and they have an odor and so forth, are considered a distraction during performances. So, at MCL Grand, by facility guidelines, we don't allow vaping, use of vaping devices in a performance space during a performance. But prior to or after a performance, in the courtyard, in the lobby, whatever, we don't restrict that. And in that case, it's strictly a distraction, just like we don't allow cell phones and texting devices and flash cameras in those same spaces. Rental fees at the park, some changes from when we came last time. Remember that we had two primary goals. We wanted to have fees that were fair and reasonable fees to cover our costs, but also be affordable to users. So, the fees we put forth, for our base fees, are a little bit higher than other Louisville parks, where they don't have the same amenities, the same location. But also significantly lower than MCL Grand, which is an indoor facility with all the amenities and all the, the opportunities there. So, we, we've hit the midpoint, or actually a little bit below the midpoint of those ranges. There is a $300 cleaning and damage deposit required, or 10% of the total rental. So, if you have a $1,000 rental, that'd still be $300. If you have a $5,000 rental, your deposit went up to $500, and that's refundable if they leave it in the shape it was in before and don't do any damage. Any damage or excess cleaning will be deducted from that.
And here's where we would add an additional fee if there's glass serving containers used.
Yes, we would add that on. And rental fees would come back to you in November as part of amendment to the fee schedule, based on input we received tonight. So, just as I mentioned last time, there's three different rental options. The great lawn is the oval. The oval itself is the great lawn, and you can be, rent the entire great lawn with the stage, or the lower, which is the half oval by the stage, and the stage comes with it, or the upper, which is the half oval away from the stage. The only time that that walkway is part of your rentals is if you rent the entire oval. Otherwise, the walkway stays open to public use. So, great lawn, upper lawn, lower lawn, they're based on four-hour rentals, what we found at the MCL Grand is that's a pretty good standard. There's prime and off-prime days. Prime is your Friday evening, Saturday and Sunday, those are when there's the higher demand, and also when we would have to pay overtime to our parks crew to go out and clean it up. So, since we're, it's costing us more, it costs the renter more, passing that fee directly on. Just to give you an idea of where I came up with the cost recovery number in chatting with Bob and his folks, we believe that it would be approximately four hours maximum to set up and take down the great lawn for a full rental. And at $100 per hour for a crew, that's $400 worth of cost to us for that crew to go out and set up and tear down. If it's only half, it's a little bit less of the cost. If it's overtime, then it's more of the cost. So, that's where we came with the $400 fee you're gonna see in just a minute for our baseline rental of the full thing, of the full oval. And what we did after discussion last time, there was the question of why we didn't have a nonprofit, and the reason was we just said all the fees the same. So, what we've done is we've kept that cost recovery level now as the nonprofit rental, so they'll pay basically to recover our costs. And there is an open rate for not, for everyone else, that is about 15% higher than the nonprofit, and that's similar to MCL Grand, where the commercial rate, the open rate, is 15% higher than the nonprofit. So, we use that same model. So, where you see the, the second batch, the nonprofit, those are the numbers we showed you last time. The, the great lawn for an off-prime rental is $400, that's the cost recovery level. During a prime day is $440, because we're paying overtime, and frankly, we probably are paying a little bit more than $440, but we tried to, again, keep these fees reasonable and affordable. By comparison, go to the open, which is the upper chart, that $400 rental becomes $460, 15% increase, and the prime four hours becomes $506, again, a 15% increase. So, the second box there, the second blue boxes, are the same numbers we showed you before. The difference is now we're applying those only to our actual nonprofit organizations, our tax-exempt nonprofits would receive that rate, and everybody else would pay the open No change here, cost can, for the access control barricades, $500 for the whole lawn, $300 for either half, and they have to use, if they want to have barricades, we are the ones that have to use our barricades and our staff to put them up. We're not gonna have individuals set up their own barricades, who knows what you get.
No BYOB?
No, no bring your own barricade. No bring your own barricade, no bring your own fence or wall. We have to do it. And frankly, the cost here is, is kinda high. It's because it costs us a lot to put it out, and we don't want to have to do it that often. Most events, they just don't need it. And if they really need it, then we've got that provision available. But most events do not need that kind of, of additional seclusion, and if they do, it's a big cost to us to put it out there. And then the stand-up wedding rental, I think I mentioned to you last time, but it's an option we created here specifically for the plaza, this doesn't exist anywhere else. There's gonna be groups, Amanda's gonna have people that want to get married in that plaza, and there's gonna be 25 people, not gonna set up any sound, not gonna set up any equipment, they just wanna go out there and get married in the plaza, and they're welcome to do that, we'd love to do it. If they want to guarantee a particular spot, they can do this $50 stand-up wedding rental fee. And we'll go out there that day and put up a sign that says, there will be a wedding here at 2:00, don't do anything else here. Otherwise, when they show up, they just show up like a regular user, and if people are having a picnic or they want a wedding, there's not anything we're gonna be able to do about that. So, that's the only thing the $50 does. If they don't want to pay it, they don't have to pay it, they take their chances on getting their exact location. But if they want to guarantee that location, have us make sure they get it. $50 for 30 guests, 30 minutes, no chairs, no sound, or no amplified sound. So, provision we put in here to try and accommodate what we know will be a use of this plaza.
When you say no chairs, no amplified sound, that is both, we're not providing it, and they're not allowed to provide it.
Correct. Now, if someone comes in and they have, their grandmother has to sit, and we're not gonna say, get up, get out, Granny, you can't do it. We're not gonna do that, we're not heartless. But they're not gonna be able to line up, you know, 20 chairs and say it's just for family. No, at that point, it's, it's not a permitted use at that point.
So, no boombox either?
Correct. Because at that point, they're creating disturbance for the rest of the park, and other people that want to do the same thing have to pay to do it.
Okay, question. The $300 deposit, which is a deposit, seems to me you could rack up $300 worth of damage in this park pretty easily, and given that it's a deposit, I guess the number that initially struck me is why was that not set at 500, which is the equivalent of the, what, what level rental is that?
That'd be a, now I've gone blank, that'd be a $5,000 rental, $500 would be a $5,000. We took the same number that MCL Grand uses. $300 is the same number, and frankly, there's more potential for damage inside that building. There's only been a few times when we've had that issue come up inside the building. At some point, we might need to come back and bump that number up. We don't want to make it so high that it's a deterrent, where an average person just cannot have their, their kids' party there, because they don't have the, here, write this, but don't cash the check. We don't want to price our own people out of using the park, but we want to make sure there's at least some protection, and so we picked the same number we've been using.
So, then we can certainly monitor this park's, all new challenge for us as far as management, let us monitor it and see if we've got, if this is where that occurs, then we'll come back.
The 10% provision is new, we don't have that currently, but we've just added it, or we will add it when the fee schedule comes back to you, we're adding it for the MCL Grand, where there are rentals, they're in the $5,000 to $10,000 range, and a $300 deposit there is almost laughable.
Yeah.
And we've had some big users that we had to work with them on some damage. So, we're gonna add that 10% to MCL Grand, and keep the 300 for now, and we can adjust if it doesn't work.
So, maybe come back in a year and see a review of what has happened in the way of damage and-
Sir, we'll keep a close eye on it, I'm sure Bob will let us know anytime there's something we need to fix, because you don't want me out there fixing those things.
No, we don't.
We really don't. There's a layout of the park that we saw a minute ago. It will look great.
On your rental fees, on your rental fees, refresh, refresh remember, because we talked about it, not tonight, but we talked about it in the past, somebody rents the park, wants to have a wedding, just a family picnic, whatever, but they rent it, and they rent the big park plaza. Are they allowed to bring their own food and beverage, or do they have to bring it through, I couldn't remember, do they have to use one of our licensed vendors to bring in food and beverage?
If they are going to be serving food to the public, then they have to follow all the rules we have for public food service. If they're serving food just to themselves, they can bring them, or they can hire a caterer. If they hire a caterer, it has to be off our approved caterer's list. That makes sure we got the insurance and the permitting necessary.
Okay, but if it's just their invited guests, they could bring their own-
You want to bring a bucket of fried chicken for your family to sit down and eat, you're welcome to do that.
Grandma bakes a cake for the picnic, you can bring the-
Right now, you cannot bring a casserole in a glass container, but we'll see what we can do about it.
They can do that.
Extra fee. According where shatters.
Special permitting.
So, that's everything, that covers all the topics that we heard from council that you wanted to revisit.
So, what we can do, council, is James will make note of the, some of the issues that you brought up, so when we get out front, we can go back over that, and it'd be easier for you to make a motion and direct us.
One thing, is that, is that a sidewalk, you can leave that picture right there, is that a sidewalk that goes all the way around the great, whatever you call it?
Oh, around the, that's actually a retaining wall.
Okay, so that is a retaining wall that goes completely all the way around it, 360 degrees?
That's going all the way around, doesn't it?
It goes pretty much around, it's basically a seat, it'll be seat height, it's about 24, 30 inches.
Oh, okay, so it's a little smaller.
Sit on it, but it is, it's actually a retaining wall.
I think at the, at the far west end, it's 30 inches high.
Yeah.
Which is why we did not include the grass wedge in the rental, because that 30-inch retaining wall creates a physical barrier.
Does it have openings in it periodically?
No, just on the ends, where the walkways are.
We really don't like to show pictures of people in that, that was an early drawing, because it starts drawing, accessibility issues, I mean, this is not for swimming purposes and waiting purposes, so this is not one of my more favorite pictures.
Right now, you're gonna have someone going to tell them to get out.
I'm not talking about the water feature, I'm just talking about the circle.
The retaining wall, I think goes around the great lawn.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
And at the far west end, it's about 30 inches.
There's no opening.
Okay.
Except on the ends, there's one over on the, where it comes back into the crosswalk.
Okay, yeah.
It lines up the north-south crosswalk, or walkway.
Okay.
That's all we had, and James will go back over this in your session.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
Do you have any other questions on it? I'm into it.
Steve, we'll have a report for you on the, your report section of that, the park plaza, completion dates.
James, you said before the holiday stroll, if I remember right.
James did, I promise him.
I am totally out of the construction prediction business. I make no estimates.
But he didn't say what year.
This is true.
Now, Liz said before 2025.
That's why I asked, that's why it was up on the wall, like 2025.
Well, I, I will guarantee it for 2025. Be careful. Be careful.
Okay, anybody ask any questions on that? That's all we had on that, right?
Yes.
We can go ahead and go into regular session, can't we, Liz? It's not 6:30.
Me, workshop.
Workshop, I mean, so I'm in.
Yes, discussion.
No, it's not 6:30, okay. Is Rudy?
He's gonna be here, he had an appointment.
Okay, okay. He won't mind. Okay, item number one. Item two is also public hearing.
Mr. Baggers, did you bring any of that material?
Sorry?
Did you have to bring the sample?
I will.
I've done. There, there's a man had it.
This is the, the recommended one? This was the one we did recommend.
They played with it, Todd actually pulled it.
Well, actually, somebody has spent about five minutes just kind of pulling and twisting, this is the difference, this is kind of a single dimension, kind of slick surface. That, we tried the same thing, and it didn't do anything.
And these will be used purely frequently.
But it'll be the, the recommended is that-
The gray, gray, whatever that is.
It'll be used for events, it'll be used for emergency situations where we may be in a grass area. You can land a, a Hulea on this thing, right, Todd? You can land a helicopter on this thing.
Military uses a lot of this type of material.
Suspended?
Sir?
This is suspended, you land a helicopter on it?
I don't know about that.
Don't promise.
But they use it on beaches, different areas, and it's also worked with our ADA and trans-
Well, I'd like to commend whoever the city staff person was that chose to use the one with the recycled material in it.
Maybe Mr. Todd.
You said fence, is that an approved deal for fencing now?
Fence, did I say fence?
Yeah.
I think you said fence.
You said fence.
Events.
I'm sorry?
Events.
Oh, events, I thought you said offense.
Redneck fence.
Okay.
Which will see us do, this is a tight western days, if you're gonna have venues set up in the park, you would roll this out, and that, that provides accessibility for people in wheelchairs, is one of the main reasons to do it.
It'd be good fence, too.
Yes, I had talked to the city manager about this item, and asked that she, or David, present a brief explanation of the, the crosswalk, Main Street crosswalk, what that element was.
Debbie, would you go over the add-on items?
In here or out there? In here or out there?
Here. I don't, I'm not pulling this out. Okay. Okay. We have, we have four add-on items, alternate three, alternate four A, four B, and alternate five. Alternate three is to reconstruct the crosswalk on Main Street, and also make improvements and also make improvements to the Poitras Plaza on the south side of Main.
And David, you might explain why that has to be done?
Mainly for ADA, for, you know, accessibility purposes.
The material that it's currently made out of now is.
Yes, it's, the, 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 the porosity and the texture are not ADA compliant. And then, of course, while we're out there, you know, in the plaza area south of Main Street, we'll go ahead and plan on, you know, some minor landscape improvements as well, as long as we're in that area to make it match more closely to what's happening on the other side.
The, the key thing I wanted to point out is this is not to be confused with the crosswalk construction that just occurred in Main Street.
Yes, the, um, the lighting that was recently installed, our public services are currently in care of that and that's sufficiently far enough away from the paved area that we're talking about here this evening so that this work can actually be done and it will not disturb that lighting that was just installed. Thank you. Very quickly, the other alternates.
Councilman, did you hear the question?
No, no, please, go ahead.
Alternate four A, we've decided we would, might want to consider extending the improvements further west down the alley, west of Poitras. Currently, the contract only includes the alley between Poitras and Mill Street and this would extend it a little bit further to the west up to the Embarium property. Four B, underground utilities, and that's mainly franchise utilities, everything that's up on a pole, electric, telephone, cable, anything like that.
So it matches what we've already.
So it already matches what we've done east of Poitras, which is an option that you selected when we did the original project. Alternate number five would provide service, water service lines for a future fire suppression system for those buildings on the south side of Main Street.
My questions, or question, is if I understood what I read correctly, all of these alternate improvements are for the alleyway to the west of Poitras.
Well, all of the add, the add items for the alley are west of Poitras.
So what, what status does that put that building to the east of?
Those are already in the project.
Yeah, those are in. Look, that was an alternate that was selected with the original name, Mill Project, several months ago.
So it's maybe the water for the sprinkler system, is the answer to that as well?
Well, the water for the sprinkler system is for everything, all the way from Mill Street to the west end of the project going past Poitras.
Okay, thank you, David.
The other questions? Item six? Item seven?
Oh, could we, could I ask a question about item six?
Yes, sir.
As far as this painting goes, it does include that ribbon with our, with our language on it?
On the top?
Um, where's, it was a picture of the tank or something, but we had a ribbon.
We talked about, I, I talked about the, the chartreuse, the green ribbon on the bottom, but not, not the verbiage.
Not the verbiage.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't really think to adding more verbiage than was up there already. I didn't, I had no scale or anything like that.
Well, that's, that's kind of my question, is that?
Carol, you want to describe?
Is that something that would be seen from, I mean, I think it's gray verbiage, but is that something that could be seen from the highway?
I don't think so, that ribbon that goes around the tank, if, we talked a bit about it, it can either be the chartreuse, it could be a lighter shade of lavender or purple if you would, but any language on there, you wouldn't be able to see that from very far at all, it'd have to be too small. That, that ribbon around there, that steel before it goes into the composite part of the tank, it's not that wide and we tried to do a little rendition to see and it wouldn't be, wouldn't be visible. Because you've already got your logo on three sides of the tank and so anything that you put on there would be very, very hard to see if you just look jumper.
Thank you. I'd really like to see it.
Haven't even thought of that one.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Another, another tank, councilman.
Pardon me?
We'll keep that in mind as we, as we look at future tanks.
All right.
Item seven? Item eight? If anyone makes a motion on this, if you will be sure to approve this, please be sure that you make it as, as recommended there. Wait, the entire portion of it would come down to two and a half years?
Is there any? What's our, what's our vote on this?
The vote to make sure that.
Make sure that it's compliant within the two and a half years.
Or they would not be able to get any future approvals from us. This is, this is waiving the site plan when they come back to us.
But they could stop and not develop any further and leave a boat right next to these properties, right?
Well, the motion again would be that the boat storage use ceases within two and a half years of this approval of waiving the site plan, so it would be.
Can we enforce ceasing that use?
Yes, sir.
And we did that similar on, down here on church, didn't we?
Related to?
Car storage?
Through the years, you've done a number of, yes, sir, that are tied to a council variance, that are tied to a site plan, so you did violation of site plan. In this case, on the other, the other piece.
You're giving them a waiver based on them cleaning this up in two and a half years and we would enforce that.
Item nine?
This one's interesting because you went to Old Town Design Review and they actually approved the Medical Center of Louisville signage, but did not approve the Solis mammography signage. And there was a picture in the backup that shows that specifically. So they have come back and they're asking council to also approve the Solis mammography due to that partnership that the MCL has. Do you see, we have an MCL rep here? I don't see, no, does that say anyone?
Both signs were over the allowed limit.
Yes.
And the Solis sign was considerably bigger than the Medical Center of Louisville sign. One was a.
I don't think.
You got the same size?
Well, one was 111 square feet, now that was 142, so we'll accept that as about the same size. But, but.
Third larger.
Pardon me?
About a third larger.
Well, according to what I'm being told, it's about the same size. So, um, to the, as, as to the lighting, they approved the non-standard lighting for the, for the Louisville sign, the illumination, but they didn't approve it for the other. So, I mean, if we do anything, I mean, I'm not a design person, so is there, what would it look like if they were lit differently?
If they were to change their design?
Well, I mean, if perhaps we permitted the sign with the standard Louisville lighting, whatever that backlighting, I guess you call it, and the other sign is illuminated there.
Councilman, again, on the, on the Medical Center of Louisville self, self internal illuminated sign, the board recommended, they don't have the power to, to approve that, so the Old Town Design Review Board recommended approval to you all to approve the internal light. They didn't approve it, they just recommended approval. Uh, they already approved the oversizing of that sign, so that's stopped there. So there's two parts to this and you're, you're, you're on it. But the internal illumination is for both sides, so they need, so there is no, there wouldn't be any contrast here and they denied the Solis sign because of style, font, shape, and does not fit the overall theme of Old Town. So they turned that size down, that sign down, so they're appealing that and the internal illumination would be for both sides.
So they would be lit the same?
Yes, it is the council, so choose to go that route.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Solis design is really keeping with that organization's logo, colors and their styling.
Does anybody have an opinion?
I do. The Solis, the Solis sign is really different. It's very much a logo, it's, and it's very brightly colored. Font doesn't suit Old Town, logo is not Old Town styling, nothing about it, it looks very modern, looks like a letterhead. And the signs are, one's taller than the other, one's wider than the other, I mean, give or take. They make about the same visual impression, but my big concern would be that even if I didn't have the font or the lighting or the, anything else, is that once MCL starts to enter in with other joint agreements with other companies, am I gonna see, you know, another sign and another sign and another sign till they wrap around the building? And I know that's kind of pushing exaggeration, but just realistically, it, it is the Medical Center of Louisville, I understand putting that name up there, but I have some grief with starting to say, oh, and we have got a joint venture with this mammography and a joint venture with this CTI and a joint venture with this blood lab and a joint venture with this, that and the other and I, so I'm not in favor of the second sign. It's that simple.
I would say.
Do we give it, can we give it any weight? I realize it's in the Old Town district, but could it be given any weight as far as it's on the margins and facing the freeway?
Well, I think again, it, even if I didn't have, that's my point, is that even if I didn't have the Old Town design concerns, which I do, but I preface by saying, even if I didn't have the concerns for font or color or lighting, I would still have the concern of seeing a ribbon of advertising across the top of MCL green. MCL, sorry, MCL, not green, MCL. So, and then you add on the color, the font, the lighting, and it's like, no, for me.
I have a little difference then on it. When you go look at it, the MCL logos that are on the building today are not the MCL logo. The MCL logo is blue, it's a different font. So it, when you look at the building, they have the tone on tone where it's white. The cross has logo designs in it, the, the healthcare cross, I mean, if you look up their, their logo, it's pretty straightforward. So my point being is the Medical Center makes some adjustments currently to try and conform or meet halfway, but the partner's not. So that, that to me is where I kind of have a challenge. Plus, we go back the other way, we give it for the partner, now the MCL comes back and they say, well, let's make, we want all of our logos clustered, although we already gave it for so-and-so, now we want to have it for, for us.
I understand.
See if I can pull up their logo.
Oh, their actual logo?
Yeah.
As opposed to the sign they're asking for?
So. Let's see. It's the blue on, blue on white and different font. So they use a sans serif font here and, or serif font with their, and it's a sans serif on the signs.
So you're saying because they made an exception to their own logo to make it work?
Yeah, I mean.
Forseable for the Old Town setting.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've already, they've already put that in place for me. I mean, they're, they're a great partner, really appreciate working with them, but.
I do, too. That's, you know, I, you know, I'll go.
That's a little higher.
So are you saying that the Solis sign actually matched in font and color to the?
If, if they gave me some concession.
You might be willing to.
I'd be willing to explore it.
Even, okay, it wouldn't work for me because I'm still back to the concern that this is the Medical Center of Louisville, I understand having signage to identify it's hospital, that's an important thing to, to be able to find it, but to start advertising partnerships on this, the building ribbon of honor, you know, ring of honor, I'm not in favor of.
What did we do, we had a similar situation, wasn't quite like this, but with the.
Senior Health Center?
No, the bank building. Mount Point, what's that?
North Star.
North Star. Remember how they leased out quite a bit of building, they came to us and wanted additional signage for additional tenants, remember that?
Yes, sir.
What it was, we didn't allow that either.
They did, didn't they?
I thought we allowed some, but not further because we had the same thing we were concerned about. Every time they lease, somebody is gonna be going up there and saying.
The initial request was tabled, tabled several times because the, the restricting factors, they had one, one visual elevation close to Main, so everybody wanted to be on that elevation directly. I don't remember the outcome of that one specifically, it was really, that was really a matter of total square footage.
That's right, that's.
On one elevation, the styles weren't in play nor was the illumination, so.
Yeah, one style of illumination, just what I was referring to, what Neil was referring to is the number of the company, but it's a little bit different scenario, that's an office building that's not a, one second. Any other comments?
That's, that's my take on it.
So the take basically is going with recommendation of the committee?
Well, you don't even have to do that, the, the question is, do you want to, do you want to approve the variance that's set forth in the caption, either you do approve the variance or you don't. If you don't approve the variance, then they have to take what basically was approved by the design. Correct, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
And it's, the variance is for both sides.
It's two parts, then there's.
Okay, so it is two parts.
It's two parts.
We handle each sign separately.
Well, the Louisville sign, Medical Center sign, has already been handled for us.
Except the illumination.
Hold on, what he's gonna tell you is two parts, the signs, if I'm correct, I'm wrong, but they're, the sign is not two parts and two different signs, it's two parts in.
Variance A is for the Solis mammographic wall sign size, is the size, okay? Variance B is for internal illumination for both sides.
So what he's saying there is that if you want to take the, the, if you deny variance A and B, you're saying they cannot do the illumination for either sign and they cannot do the Solis, Solis sign, correct?
Correct.
If you wanted to deny A, which is the Solis sign, you could and could allow B, which is the illumination, but that's, that's the two parts.
Correct. Correct. Table A, send it back to the drawing board if you want to move on.
That's a good point. I would, that's a good point. If you're gonna do anything, I think that'd be a good thing if you want to see something else to, you could table it and see what they come back with because I think that's a good point. If you plan on doing, or if you don't want to do anything, you just take, you give it down, but.
Old Town Design Review actually recommended both the illumination and the signs for the Medical Center sign. That was recommended by the committee vote. But they denied both requests for the Solis, so it's really pretty clean between the two signs.
I have no problem if they came back at it with something more in scale.
So then they don't need a variance for the illumination, is that what we're saying?
They do.
They do.
Yeah, for both.
That, I was just talking about what the committee recommended.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Of course, we did the rehab institute in 13, we did allow for that variance.
So there's. Which is the same illumination?
The same type of thing, yeah. All, I don't think it was right on the front of the building, it's over on the side, if I remember right. It is backlit, though.
I think it's, I'm not even sure it's on the side, I think it faces.
Faces parking lot.
Yeah, parking lot.
Yeah, but it is backlit.
Rest assured, the illumination is all you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Not the signage, basically. I mean, not the content of the sign.
Yeah, I don't think I'll be in favor of it in this format, but.
Table what, table?
They came back, I think I might.
Table that part of it sounds reasonable to me.
So if you approve the variance, you're approving.
The new sign.
This, the size of the sign as well as the illumination for the Medical Center sign and the Solis sign in relation to its size and illumination, that's the variance, correct, Eric? So if you approve that variance, just as it's stated here, you're gonna approve both the medical sign and the Solis sign as, as requested by the Medical Center. If you want to go, now it is, and if, if you don't want to do what the committee recommended, then you would, committee recommended that you treat the Solis sign, you don't, you don't approve. that you treat the Solus sign, you don't, you don't approve its size or its illumination.
So, where you're wanting to go, it would be tabling A, approving B?
Correct.
A and B. A is the Louisville sign, B is the Solus.
A is the Solus sign.
I'm not, I'm not going to split the lighting from the design. Come at me with a new sign. It's all one entity.
So that's tabling A, but you're okay with, with the Medical Center?
I thought they approved that part.
We still have to approve it.
They approved the size, not the illumination. But it's still a variance, and I think that's what is getting confusing.
They recommended approval. But they make, they recommended approval of the MCL sign.
Correct.
Both lighting and design.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good with that. I'm good with following their recommendation on that. I'm also good with following their recommendation on the Solus sign of not approving it.
And tabling that, so...
Table it, let them go back in the, however we want to do that. If we don't approve it, can they come back? Does it matter if we table versus not approve?
Well, I'd like to give them the option of coming back.
They're not here, but I will say that when the OTERC met with the Solus mammography people, they were willing to entertain some alternate designs, and the Solus mammography was not willing to change it, because it is their brand. If that helps at all. There should be a compromise.
Let me come back again, regardless. So, does tabling it help anything?
I don't know. But it doesn't sound, if they're not going to compromise, it probably doesn't.
It doesn't really seem like it changes anything anyway, because you can deny it, and they can always come back and apply for something else. So you haven't closed the door, other than the one you're going to close anyway.
Well, they have a difference, and they have to reapply and pay again.
So if you want to approve the sign, the Medical Center sign, as recommended by the committee, would approve the two variances related to that sign, size and illumination. And you would deny the variance related to the Solus mammography sign, both on size and illumination. Correct, Eric? Did I state that correctly?
The, no.
No?
The Old Town, and this is, this is, I may want to look at in the future, the Old Town Design Review Committee has the authority to side, to, to approve size and oversized signs. Pick the buck and stop with their, with them, and they did that for Medical Center. So that's off the table.
Yeah.
That, that sign's off the table. So A is just for Solus or size. B is for internal lighting for both signs. They made a recommendation that you approve the internal illumination for Medical Center of Louisville, but then they told you to deny Solus in its entirety.
Okay, now I'm clear.
What I'm indicating there is, you would not want, if you don't want the Solus sign, you would, you would not pass A. You would not give them the variance A. If you wanted the, allow the illumination for the Medical Center Louisville sign, you, the motion would be to allow illumination for the Medical Center Louisville sign only.
Which is a variance.
Right. Like for the Medical Center Louisville sign only, because it's actually for both signs, and you'd need to stipulate that it's for Louisville, that's the same sign.
And I don't know that you have to get hung up on that A, which is A and B, it's just stating what you're approving and what you're not approving.
I thought he said it was listed as A and B.
It's not.
I got it.
You can just say, I approved this, I helped that.
Nice to see the Design Review Committee working with the, the hospital on their signage, too.
Until we get to that over.
I don't know, nothing to talk about.
All right, any other questions there? Have to get that one figured out.
Sorry, that was my concern.
All right, item 10.
I'll just say something, let the lawyers figure it out.
I love that beer.
About half item 10, we went over that earlier.
I'm succeeding.
Anything else, counsel? Julie? Leah? Donna? Next item on the agenda will be the invocation led by Mayor Pearl Tim Gilmore, and then the pledge, both American and Texas flag, led by Councilman Durham.
Please join me in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have no idea. Unless they're the citizens on patrol or something like that. I suppose we'll have to talk to the mayor. Mayor Minn, oh.
Proclamation, please.
That's right, they don't have to do that.
Please, sir.
So you got that in, Mr., don't you?
You can revise that any way you want. It's very long.
Yeah, I know, I see if you made the font a little bit smaller, you've got more on that page.
Can I have our city manager come to understand? Is it okay if I invite our city manager to come?
Well, I invited Mr. Ray Hernandez, who's the president of our Chamber of Commerce, to come down, because we have a special proclamation. And I'll read the proclamation, and I'll let you introduce everyone, and then give you two moments to say something. All right? Okay. And just bear with me, like I told Ray, if he'd have made the font just a little bit smaller, we could have got a little more on this page. Whereas, communities across the state of Texas will recognize Chamber of Commerce Week on October 20th, 24th, to celebrate the hard work and accomplishments of Chamber of Commerce in the communities they represent. The proclamation of the week issued by Governor Rick Perry states, "I encourage all Texans to recognize the vital and constructive accomplishments of these organizations, which are crucial to the development and growth of strong communities throughout our great state." And whereas, Aaron Cox, CEO of Texas Chamber of Commerce Executives, said, "I firmly believe a strong Chamber of Commerce is one of the most critical components of every successful community. The passion, dedication, ingenuity, and ability to move people toward a common goal, make them part of the backbone of every great community, it should be celebrated." And whereas, Bruce Partain, President, CEO of the Nacogdoches County Chamber of Commerce and Texas, Texas Chamber of Commerce Executives, 2014 Chairman of the Board, said, "The Texas Chamber of Commerce Executives represents chambers ranging from one-person offices to large metropolitan organizations. Our goal is to keep Texas the most business-friendly state in the Union, while growing our communities and sharing best practices." And whereas, Texas Chamber of Commerce Week is coordinated annually through TCC-E, which is based in Austin. TCC-E is an organization of chamber executives from across the state working together to improve the business climate in Texas, while developing ways to enhance the quality of life in the communities that they represent. And whereas, Chamber of Commerce staff and volunteers are routinely involved in many areas of the community that make, make it great, although their work is often done behind the scenes, these may include business development, business retention, business recruitment, education and workforce development, community development, and beautification, among others. And whereas, the Louisville area Chamber of Commerce was recently recognized as the best Chamber of Commerce in Denton County, and earned more marketing awards this year for the Texas Chamber of Commerce Executive Organization than any chamber, Chamber of Commerce in Denton County. Now, we're going to take an intermission, and I'll read you the rest. Therefore, I, Dean Urick, Mayor of the City of Louisville, on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 20th, 24th, 2014, as Texas Chamber of Commerce Week, proclaimed 20th day of October, 2014. I will say this, all kidding aside, I do like to give Ray and everybody else, because I've been a member of the chamber nineteen seventy-something, I can't remember when it was, when I joined the chamber. I know it's been beneficial, not only to me, but to this community over the years. It is a big part of our community in the fact that they integrate business owners and the citizens together to form the great community that we can all live and work in together. So, with that, Ray, I will turn it over to you, let you introduce everyone, and then say a few words.
Let's give a picture first, and then give a picture.
Well, I'll give you a here. I'm standing next to Terry, that way I'll make it short.
That's right. That's nice. You've got a high hand. All finish it. Okay. What did you say? Were introducers made?
So, thank you for the next forty-five minutes. I asked our city managers to come join us up here. Our mayor obviously represents our elected officials, our council, and the city manager represents the city staff. The chamber and all the businesses that we represent, I think as of today, about seven-hundred-and-forty businesses, and tens of thousands of team members in those businesses, can't do the good work that we do without the support of the city. And it's both our elected officials and our city staff that rise up time and time again and support the work that we're doing. And it's not just about getting a building permit, but it's all the things that we do, from our police, our fire, building permits, all the different offices. Yesterday, I had the good fortune of attending the International Economic Development Conference taking place in Fort Worth over the next couple of days. And it reminded me of how important it is that we have vital partnerships, and we're very privileged to have a strong partnership with the city of Louisville. Many chambers of commerce do not have that opportunity. And with that, I'm going to reserve the rest of my time to introduce the, the great folks, the members of the Chamber of Commerce that were able to join us today. Bob, you want to start?
I'm Bob Croyer, representing the Louisville Morning Rotary Club.
Karen Allen, Ross Bank.
Fred Woodfield, up by Auto Leashes in Louisville.
Donna Vera, City of Louisville.
He adds loan with free max advantage.
Commissioner Bobby Mitchell.
That's it. Let's give a big to everyone, just making certain, appreciate all the work you did and you've been here, having everything to offer. Will you do one? Thank you so much, Ray. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I ask Eureka Lowery to come by, please. Start.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
At this time, what we're doing is giving some appreciation certificates and plaques to our citizens who have taken their time out of their lives and their family to donate to the city, to be on boards and commissions. So now, Ms. Lowery, I'd like to present you with an appreciation for your dedicated service on the library board, place four, from July 2007 to June 2014. I want to thank you so much for your service, and appreciate all that you do for our community. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Oh, that's right, yes, that's right. Yes, thank you. She was reminding me about some stuff at the homecoming parade. I hope y'all were able to attend the homecoming parade, it was just incredible. Karen Locke. Where are you, Karen? There you are. Once again, I want to thank these people so much for all the work they do. I don't know if you realize it, but we as a council and city staff will tell you also that we couldn't do the work that we do if we didn't have citizens that were concerned enough to volunteer their time and efforts to help this be a great community. This is for Ms. Locke, it's presented to Ms. Locke, an appreciation for her dedicated service on the library board, place two, August 2004 to June 2014. Thank you so much, appreciate all your work. You can see, these ladies love their work, what they do, the numbers of years. Did we have anybody else that, that came in that served on board commission, but didn't let us know you were here? We do have some plaques and stuff, but... Okay, thank you very much.
We don't have a policeman tonight. We don't have a policeman.
Okay. Item number one, consideration of ordinance for zone change request on 0.354 acres of land located north of the Atchison-Topeka and Santa Fe Railroad, and approximately 1,000 feet south of State Highway 121 from light industrial to public use. Zoning in 34.916 acres located on the south side of State Highway 121, and bisected by the Atchison-Topeka and Santa Fe Railroad, from light industrial and general business zoning to Plan Unit Development Two, as requested by Texas Development Services on behalf of the property owner. The Plan Unit Development District allows for innovative community design concepts that may, concepts that may contain a mix of uses, which may deviate from the city's standard zoning regulations in some regards, but which also provide for community enhancements. The Windhaven Crossing Public Utility District proposes to integrate 372 attached town homes and supporting recreational amenities with two commercial lots. A total of 0.623 acres is being dedicated to the city for extension of Windhaven Parkway, and 0.354 acres is being dedicated in zone public use for future construction of a stormwater lift station facility. The Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of five-zero at their meeting on October 7th, 2014. Do have some speaker cards filled out here. First have Mr. Steve Friedman, if you would, come forward, please, sir, and state your name and address for the record, please. name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, thank you for turning that back around, thank you very much.
I'll send you an invoice.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Steve Friedman, I live at twenty-five-thirteen Dover Drive, and that's in the Castle Hills North section, which is just to the south of Windhaven, bordering on this proposed development. Although I'm speaking in opposition, I appreciate the development occurring there, but from a personal standpoint, our property is at the apex of the wall that will front this new development. We actually are right at the backside of the pool, and we note that it is a metal fence, an open fence, and we're kind of concerned that the brick and stone wall is not being continued along to shield us and maintain our privacy, as well as maintain the looks along Windhaven. The density of the property on this northeast side of the railroad is a concern for us because of the large lot homes that are in our particular area that border on that section. I would encourage you to return this to planning and zoning, to consider decreasing the density on that northeast side development in this proposed district. We enjoy living in Lewisville, I don't enjoy paying the taxes, but I do hope that you'll listen to our concern because of this invasion into our privacy. Additionally, extending Windhaven is a wonderful thing. The donation of the land for the pump station is also a concern of ours because of the potential for noise or intrusion in our area. Should it come through, we've been waiting for Windhaven to be brought through, we're very concerned about traffic as it comes through Castle Hills North. So I hope you'll take my comments in the positive sense that I hope they are there, and reconsider this overall proposal.
Let me just get something clarified for you here. City Manager, his address, is it actually in the city limits of Lewisville?
I believe that would be in Castle Hills and not be in the city's ETJ.
So you do, I just want you to notice that you do not pay taxes to the city of Lewisville.
I understand, I pay Denton County taxes.
When you said you didn't enjoy paying taxes, I thought you meant you paid taxes there, but you don't. Okay, I just wanted to let you know.
Who does?
Citizens, citizens that are in the city limits of Lewisville pay taxes to Lewisville, but you're not in the city limits, so you don't pay the taxes.
I understand.
You would pay taxes to the water district.
I misunderstood you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your time.
You bet, thank you. And Marty Broland, I'm hoping I'm saying it right.
Where was the applicant?
I beg your pardon?
Where was the applicant?
Did you want to speak?
I'll wait until your staff.
We're not going to have a staff proposal, if you want to speak, you, like, you speak now.
That's fine.
That's okay. If you would just give your name and address for the record, please.
Marty Brown, Texas Development Services, fifteen-twelve Crescent Drive, Carrollton, Texas, we're representing the property owner, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have had or hadn't been answered previously.
Anybody have any questions of the applicant at this time? Okay, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have one other card here, Karen Friedman, who did not wish to speak but is in opposition to this. Her address is twenty-five-thirteen Dover Drive, also in Castle Hills. Councilman Durham, motion closed. Yep, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
By Councilman Durham to close the public hearing, second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Councilman Durham? Mayor, with the comments that were made here, I understand their concerns, but I think this is still a good use of this property. It is next to the railroad track, it is going to be next to Windhaven, Windhaven will have traffic on it. So it's always been planned to be there. So with that, I move to approve as presented.
We have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tierney, any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending Chapter Six, Land Development Regulations, and Chapter Seventeen, Zoning of the Lewisville City Code, rezoning zero-point-three-five-four acres of land located north of the Atchison-to-Pica and Santa Fe Railroad and a thousand feet south of State Highway 121 from light industrial to public use zoning, rezoning approximately thirty-four-point-nine-one-six acres located on the south side of State Highway 121 and bisected by the railroad from light industrial and general business zoning to Plan Unit Development Two, creating the regulations for the PUD Two, correcting the official zoning map, providing severability, savings, and repealing clauses, providing a penalty for the violation of this ordinance and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I do want to thank both of, all of you for coming tonight, thank you very much. Item twos, public hearing, consideration of zone change request from Office District to Old Town Mixed Use Two located on zero-point-four-eight-four acres at two-sixteen West Main Street, further identified as Thomas Edition Lot One Block A, as requested by William Thomas, the property owner. The zero-point-four-eight-four acre property is located at two-one-six West Main Street between Charles and Milton Street on the south side of Main Street. The property was at one point in time a residence built in nineteen thirty-four and was later converted to an office. The zone change request is consistent with the Old Town Master Plan and will also allow greater flexibility with setbacks for any future development. The Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of zoning requests by a vote of five-zero on their October 7th, 2014 meeting. I did not have any speaker cards filled out, recommendations, the council approved proposed ordinance amending Lewisville City Code Chapter Seventeen in the comprehensive zoning ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Tierney?
Move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion to close the public hearing, by Councilman Tierney, second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve as presented by Councilman Tierney, a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor, I beg your pardon, I'm sorry, Counselor.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas, by rezoning Lot One Block A of the Thomas Edition containing approximately zero-point-four-eight-four acres of land, from Office District zoning to Old Town Mixed Use Two District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is visitor citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Do have a carter speed, a card filled out here, and is it Raul Turner? I may have mispronounced the first name, I'm sorry. Give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rick Turner, I reside at fifteen-twenty-seven Rocky Point in Lewisville.
Rick, I'm sorry, I apologize.
We're here tonight just to acknowledge some folks, I guess you can see fire and police standing back here. I run an organization called Spirit of a Hero, and we raise money for critically injured soldiers. Y'all might have heard the name Travis Mills before, he was our very first recipient ever, and when we heard Travis's story, I actually, right now, Chief Tuttle on the side of the road and asked him about draping the flag for us that I had seen in pictures before. He had turned me on to Chief Carter, and Lewisville Fire Department has done a banging job for us the last couple of years, three years now to be exact. Our fourth is coming up, May sixteenth. But these guys have done an incredible job, you know, I had envisioned a couple ladder trucks, bring us over the highway, draping a big American flag for us to ride under, and I basically just put it in these guys' hands, and Chief Carter, I said, hey, can you make it work? He said, well, let's see what we can do. He sent me a picture of their drive around, and, you know, it brought tears to our eyes, it was exactly what we wanted, and it's kind of become a staple now as part of our annual rides. So I'd like to recognize each one of these guys back here, and Captain Carter, if I could get you to step up here. We've got a little plaque here, it's, "Spirit of a Hero proudly presents Lewisville Fire Department with great appreciation for the outstanding professionalism supporting our annual rides." I'm going to have Susan take the picture. And if I could get fire just to file through here, and then if y'all could just make your way back to the wall, that'd be great. You want to hand it to them, please? I'll say thank you, man. We appreciate it, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Guys doing an excellent job. Thank you very much. Thank you, boss. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much, sir. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. As well as the Colony and Flower Mound are also here with us, these guys were part of making our mission happen. Thank you, buddy. We really appreciate you guys, we appreciate all your hard work, and we hope to do it again soon, May sixteenth. All right. Chief Taylor, if I could use that up here, and Chief Powell. We had several different municipalities. Dallas PD was supposed to escort the ride, that fell through. I called Officer Hopper back here, and I said, hey, man, I'm in a crunch, I really need some other guys to step up. We had several different municipalities from Saginaw, all the way up Thirty-Five W, cross over Thirty-Five E back down south to Strokers down in Dallas. There was lots of guys that were alongside the road in their squad cars, you know, blocking arm ramps and whatnot. We got to Lewisville, and each one of these guys were out of their vehicles and at the position of attention as we came through there. We really, really appreciate that. And Spirit of a Hero proudly recognizes Lewisville Police Department with great appreciation for the outstanding professionalism in escorting and supporting our annual rides. Is there anybody else, any more police here?
I've got your on the street, sir.
On the street, sir. All right. Thank you, sir, thank you for your time.
Well, Rick, we certainly thank you for coming tonight, and we appreciate what you do. I've seen your ride, I've stood there and watched it, and one year was actually out there with a flag, my wife and I sat out there with a flag on the freeway on Thirty-Five, and it is very heartwarming to see the attention that is paid to our heroes, and we want to thank, again, our police and firefighters that make us so proud and their job that they do every day of the year for us, and we appreciate it very much.
We certainly appreciate it, and we're proud to be based here in Lewisville.
That's right.
You know, it's nice to know that our town supports us. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. All right. Thank you, sir, appreciate you. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Appreciate the work you do.
The next one was, man, again, March?
May sixteen.
May sixteen.
Actually, the kid that we're looking at benefiting in May, these guys are critically wounded, you know, they're not just broken arms and lice, these kids with pistol lips and whatnot. The kid that we're talking about benefiting in May actually stepped on an IED, lost both legs, and threw his upper body forward and he landed on another IED.
Well, thank you again for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, for a citizen to request a removal on item, a speaker card must be filled out, submitted to the city secretary. I did not have anyone asked to have any items pulled. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve the consent agenda, as written.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve the consent agenda, a second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code Section Six dash one-two-three-B regarding required landscape area adjacent to public streets for soccer city of Lewisville, a sporting goods retailer located at fourteen-forty South State Highway 121 Business, as requested by Howsheng Yavani, and I apologize if I mispronounced that, P.E. of Yavani Consulting Engineers Incorporated, representing the property owner. The point-one-five-three acre property located on State Highway 121 Business is zone general business and is plotted as one lot. The developer has submitted an engineering site plan and intends to build a permanent retail building, meeting the Lewisville City Code Land Development Regulations with the exception of the ten-foot landscape strip facing State Highway 121 Business. The land development regulations require that a landscape strip be provided adjacent to all public private streets. The landscape strip provided is required to be a minimum of ten feet in width, exclusive of the street right away. The current site is configured to meet all other requirements, however, due to the size and orientation of the lot, the required landscape strip area in square feet can be provided with a triangle-shaped landscape strip. Landscape strip. This particular strip would be wider at the north end at fifteen feet and narrow to four feet on the south end of the lot. Other landscaping requirements are being met. Recommendation is that council approve the variance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir. I like what I see, move to approve as presented.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is consideration of a variance to Lewisville City Code, Chapter Six, Land Development Regulations, Section Six dash three-four, when an engineering site plan is required regarding waiving the required engineering site plan for illegal non-conforming storage use on a fifteen-point-four-four acre site owned by Wendy Ridge LLC located at one-thousand Lake Ridge Road, as requested by Howard Nycom, the owner. The subject site was built in nineteen seventy-five as an explosives factory which ceased operation in the nineteen eighties. The current use is currently a legal non-conforming boat storage facility, Zone Multifamily Two. The property totals twenty-eight-point-zero-six acres. Part of the site has significant soil contamination. Property has gone through the environmental abatement process with the city's brownfields EPA grant program and the Texas Commission on Environmental Equality. TCEQ has agreed to release twelve-point-six-two acres for development of a proposed multifamily subdivision by Alliance Residential, leaving fifteen-point-four-four acres still under the environmental abatement process. The existing driveway is located on the twelve-point-six-two acre parcel, and it is being requested that the driveway be relocated onto the fifteen-point-four-four acre parcel, still going through the environmental abatement process. Land Development Regulations require an engineering site plan due to the relocation of the new driveway. The owner has agreed with Alliance Residential that once TCEQ releases the remaining fifteen-point-four-four acres, structures will be demolished and cleared for development as well. The final environmental cleanup is anticipated to be two and one-half years from completion. Until such time, the owner is also requesting that the boat storage facility be allowed to operate until TCEQ releases the property. Recommendation is that council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above, provided the boat storage use ceases within two and one-half years of council approval of this request, and once the environmental cleanup is completed, demolition of all buildings on site is completed. Councilman Vaughn?
May I?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I do have a card here. I think they're, I don't think they want to speak, but let me just make sure, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Howard Nycom, did you want to speak, sir, or are you just here to answer questions?
Just here to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. So he is here, if you'd like to ask any questions. Now, go ahead, Mr. Vaughn, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation, make a motion that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above, provided the boat storage use ceases with... as set forth in the caption above, provided the boat storage use ceases within two and a half years of council approval of this request. And once the environmental cleanup is completed, demolition of all buildings on site is completed.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Vaughn, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Nycom, for coming, sir. Consideration of the two variance requests to the Lewisville City Code, Section 9.5-211H, signs requiring a permit- permit in Section 9.5-207B, sign requirements, lighting for the Medical Center of Lewisville located at 500 West Main Street, as requested by James G. Russell, Chief Off- Chief Operating Officer, Medical Center of Lewisville. Medical Center of Lewisville has a large campus located in Old Town with numerous buildings. Being in Old Town restricts both the number, size, type, and illumination methods of signage allowed versus other parts of the city. The Old Town Design Review Committee granted a size modification for the Medical Center of Lewisville sign and cross and recommended approval of the internal illumination for this sign. However, the Old Town Design Review Committee denied the Solus Mammography sign both in size, style, and illumination at their September 8, 2014 meeting. Recommendation, council consider the request variance as set in, uh, forth in the caption above. I believe I have, uh, first I have Ashley McClellan would like to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for allowing me to speak on this issue, and it's good to see y'all again. I like seeing you here, and I prefer that you don't ever have to come to the hospital, but if you do, we appreciate you choosing us. Um, as you're well aware, that we're very, um, committed to service to our community here in Lewisville. We're very proud to be in Lewisville and partner with the city in- in multiple, uh, cap- capabilities and capacities, one of those being our new 24-bed emergency department. If you haven't driven by, uh, there's dirt moving. It is happening, and we appreciate the city's support on that to make that a reality for this community. Um, one of the things that we are challenged with is, how do you continue to grow medical services and really make Medical Center of Lewisville a medical destination on this side of town? And Mayor, Uker and I have discussed that, and one of the things that we thought would be a great opportunity is to have a joint ventured relationship with Solus Mammography to provide a higher level of care for women's imaging services. And so Solus Mammography is actually part of Medical Center of Lewisville. It's a department of the hospital, not just a tenant. And through our partnership with Solus, we're able to do 3D tomography, which is a new type of imaging for women's imaging. And we're also- we have full-time, uh, women's imaging radiologists that are fellowship-trained, which we didn't have before. We have online scheduling and same-day results. So really, the request for the signage variance, uh, was for both of the names, both Medical Center of Lewisville and Solus Mammography, to be presented together, uh, because we're trying to let the community know that we have this higher level of care in Lewisville, and they don't need to go anywhere else to get that level of care. So that was really why they were proposed together. I understand there was some discussion about separating them out. Um, and so, um, I believe there's been some discussion in closed session and some discussion about the look of the Solus logo itself. Um, I believe at the Old Town District, from what I'm aware of, there's some discussion on whether or not their logo could be changed. Um, if it's acceptable to the council, I can take that back and see if we can have that discussion again. Um, again, they're across four states, and they have a corporate logo, and, um, and so they're obviously not eager to change their brand. Um, and so I would have to see what I could do there, but I respect the Old Town business opinion and your opinion as well. So, um, I think my- I believe another concern might be the proliferation of signage. So is every tenant gonna get a sign on the building? And no, that's not the case. They are- they are part of the hospital. It's a hospital-based department. They're not just a tenant. They are Medical Center of Lewisville. So I did want to address that concern as well. Any questions for me?
I want to tell you that we- we had discussions, but they were not in- in closed session. They were in the workshop,
Okay, excuse me.
which is held prior to council meeting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay. That's okay.
I usually don't have to come here too often, which is probably a good thing, right?
That's right.
Uh, you made the statement that this particular organization is a partner with the hospital?
Yes.
And so therefore, the sign is as a partner and not as a...
Tenant.
Tenant.
Yes, sir.
So what is the hospital or, to the best of your knowledge, what is the... What is likely to happen if the hospital has another partner with a, example, a heart specialty operation? Would they not be entitled to signage being that they were a partner as well?
I wouldn't say anyone's entitled to anything based on this variance, obviously, um, but I know you have to worry about precedents that you set. So, um, at this time, we have no other joint ventures that we're actively discussing or negotiating. Um, I think it would de- depend on our commitment at the facility level to promote those services, but we see over 15,000 women's imaging patients a year, which is a significant volume, and based on the volume and the fact that people can walk up for mammography services versus they can't for some of those higher level of care things. There is a- a visual connection that we're trying to promote to the community that you don't need to do for other types of services because it requires a- a referral or a physician referral.
Okay, well, I would like to... You speak for Solus. Is that correct?
Yes, Solus is us.
Yes. Well, from my position, I'd like to hear the hospital's stance on that issue. Thank you very much for explaining.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Yes, um, just for clarification, because I have some concerns with this. It was, um, I'm not sure the word tenant was batted around. Um, I always understood that it was a JV, not a tenant.
Okay.
And that, uh, the concern would be, uh, for example, as you mentioned, precedent set for possible future JVs and their desire to have, uh, marketing on the building.
Sure.
So, um, I don't- and in some ways, that's a fine line distinction, distinction anyway, between tenant and JV in terms of ultimately, it's the sign on the building, not the relation, you know, not the contractual relationship. But just for the record, I don't think we, uh, or I certainly didn't think it was a tenant. I thought it was a JV.
Okay. That makes sense.
Ashley, if we were to table this, how much time do you think you would need to- to go back and have that conversation before we need to bring it back?
Um, I would need to work with the marketing team within Solus on that, but I think we could probably bring it back in a month. I would, if that would be acceptable to the council.
I guess the question I have, though, is are they firmly planted in the use of their logo as their...
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm, you know, it- it will be a challenge for me to- to try to overcome that. They're across four states, and people go online to their websites, and they get triaged to, okay, do you want to go to Plano for your care? Or do you want to go to Los Colinas? Or now you can go to Lewisville. And so it is- it is a very well-known name in women's imaging services, which is one of the reasons we partnered with them. So changing the look of that name, as you can imagine, is a very difficult sell. Um... But I will try. But I can't make any promises.
It still raises that concern. Um, there's no way to know in the future that you will not JV with somebody else and that they would then turn to the Solus, uh, sign and say, "Well, we also have a JV with you. They have a JV with you. We'd like to do what they did. Let's take that to the council, and let's get another sign." And I know it's kind of maybe an, um, an exaggerated description, but I referred to it as the potential of a ring of honor on the top of the building for different JVs and the concern of that I wouldn't want to see that happen.
No.
So, so just so you know where- where I'm coming from.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mayor, uh, from staff, what- how far above, uh, the total signage that could be put on the building are they above?
Eric, I can answer that. In the, um, in the Old Town District, our regular allowance for a, a single-tenant wall sign is 50 square feet. This would be considered a multi-tenant wall sign, and so I believe they could have up to 20 square feet since they would be considered a multi-tenant.
So, so the whole hospital could only put 50 square feet of signage on their entire building?
That's correct.
On their entire building?
Without a modification from the Old Town Design Review Committee who can grant those modifications.
Four-story building and all the other... How many square feet are in the building?
Two.
Few hundred thousand? I don't know.
More than two?
More than two. That's true. But what other store could have 50 square feet?
I'm sorry?
What other building could have 50 square feet? Would a thousand-square-foot building have 50 feet?
Any building within the Old- the Old Town District.
The building is a building. That doesn't make any sense, folks. I- I hate to say that to you. And I wasn't in the workshop, but I'm in favor of this. Uh, most of our shopping centers are involved with tenants. They don't- the owner that owns the building does not own the business. So... And I know y'all have heard this before from me, so I will be in favor of this.
Anybody else have any questions? Ashley, if you would, I- I did fail to ask you. If you would, just state your name and address and who you represent for our record, please. I forgot to ask you to do that.
Absolutely. I'm Ashley McClellan. I'm at Medical Center of Lewisville, 500 West Main, uh, Lewisville 75057, CEO.
Sorry. I should have asked you to do that again when I forgot. I apologize.
Mayor, did, uh, Councilman Gilmore make a motion to table it?
He has not yet, I don't think. I think he just asked about...
I just asked for the timeframe.
Alright.
Ashley, we've- we've worked with the hospital in the past, and I'm more than willing to- to give you all some time to see what we can come up with on this. So if, uh, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this for one month, and I don't know what date that is. Can anybody at staff help me with that?
Second meeting in November.
Second meeting in November?
November 17th.
Seventeenth.
November 17th.
Are you tabling all the grant requests?
I- I'm gonna move to table the whole variance request at this time. That gives Ashley the most opportunity to work within those boundaries.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to table the- the item until the November 17th meeting.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tierney. Any more discussion? All in favor?
I would like to have seen us go ahead and approve the request for the Medical Center of Lewisville sign. I don't have any reason to- for them to come back with a modification of their request, so I don't see a reason not to go ahead and proceed with that tonight.
Is Councilman Ferguson making an amendment?
No.
With a motion?
No, he's just saying, this is just discussion. We've had a motion and a second. This is just discussion. Any other discussion?
I could retract that and make that change.
Okay. Would you be willing to make that amendment to your...
Be fine. I'd...
Excellent.
amend that motion to, uh, approve the Medical Center sign. Ashley, will that work for you?
Um, you know, honestly, the purpose of putting the sign up is to put them up together, so I'm not sure if we'll put just the MCL logo itself by itself without the Solus.
I think it's gonna be...
I don't know what's most appropriate.
Right. I think it'd be better for her and staff to work on this, the entire thing, instead of separating it out. Obviously, you're talking about it being one- one contiguous effort to go up there and do that, so I- I think it'd be prudent to go ahead with your...
Well, then, based on that, I'll- I'll leave it.
Can I comment? I'll- I'll actually retract my statement because what I didn't understand is I did not understand that you wanted them together or nothing.
Yes.
Okay. I thought they were independent requests.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ashley. See you November 17th.
Yeah, good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10 is a tabled item. Provide direction to staff about Old Town Park Plaza facility use guidelines related rental fee schedule. City Council Policy 4.0 grants the city manager authority to adopt directives governing the use of city facilities. However, because Old Town Park Plaza is expected to be a high-profile facility, staff is seeking council input on use guidelines and associated rental fees. Staff seeking directional sale, service of alcohol, smoking, hours, and operation fees. Recommendation is council provide direction to staff on the Old Town Park Plaza facility's use guidelines and rental fee schedule. I believe Mr. Kunkie is gonna do a presentation on that.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'm just gonna highlight the staff recommendations we presented earlier and then make note of those areas where you asked for some adjustments or some further review. Hours of operation for Old Town Park Plaza are proposed by staff as 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. on Friday and Saturday, with the possibility of exceptions being made for rental events or city events. Uh, you'll recall this matches the opening time of other city parks and the closing time of the Old Town Entertainment District. Under prohibited items, I want to correct one mistake I made earlier. Uh, open flames and tapered candles are not prohibited in the parks. They are prohibited. MCL Grand is where we got that language. Council asked us to revisit that language on flames, and I think we're gonna be able to do that very easily based on that correction. In addition, uh, the glass containers, council asked us to go back and review new ordinance language that would allow glass containers for certain uses, permitted uses in certain areas of the park, and we'll go back and review that ordinance language. Uh, alcohol in the plaza, uh, the staff recommendation on that was to allow alcohol only during permitted events and did not hear any indication that you wanted to change that, although there was a request by council for us to come back to you when we bring ordinance language with options on open container provisions also. So we will do that when we return with the language for the ordinance. Under smoking, the staff recommendation was to allow smoking in the park, as we do with any other outdoor park, uh, recreation area. However, it would be prohibited within 15 feet of the children's play area and splash pad, and in addition, based on council input, it would be prohibited within 15 feet of the boundary of the great lawn, which is the oval-shaped grass in front of the stage. Originally, that was to be only during certain events, but now we will make that during all uses. Rental fees at the plaza, uh, the only change that I heard on rental fees is that if we have the glass container language adjusted in the ordinance, that there also would be an additional deposit for anyone that has glass container at their permitted event, and so we will add that to the fee schedule ordinance language that we bring back to you in November. And I did not hear any other changes on the rental fees as they were proposed. And...
Do you happen to have a, uh, probably not, I should ask, uh, uh, do you can put up on the screen of the park itself?
The map itself? Well, that's right, anyway. So as you look at the map on the screen, it's actually upside down. North is on the bottom. That's just the shape of the paper with the projector. But the, um, the stage is on the far left. The grass oval in front is the great lawn. Then you see the wedge-shaped grass that extends beyond that. You can see it looks yellow and blue in this drawing, but that's the, uh, the man-made stream and walkway that goes from east to west across the park. And the splash pad and children's play area are in the, in this case, the bottom right corner of the park. It's actually in the northwest corner. So again, orientation main is on the top of this map, and church is on the bottom.
If you could, do you have a pencil or something? Maybe you could kind of point to the two areas that you were talking about that'd be non-smoking?
Yes, sir. Right here, in the splash pad and children's play area, would be no smoking within 15 feet of that boundary, just as we have now with the bleachers and concession stands and stuff at other parks. And the other would be right here, the great lawn, which is the oval-shaped grass in front of the stage. That would be no smoking within 15 feet of the great lawn, and we would work up a signed package to mark that.
And then, so that would in essence leave half of the, basically, half the park smoking and allowed and half the park non-smoking?
Approximately that, yes, sir.
Just, and I'm not, but close to it. Okay. Alright, that's one. I just want everybody to be able to see that. Anybody else have any questions of staff on this this time?
Thank you, Mr. Kunkie.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I, uh, is there a motion to be made on this?
Yes. Basically, give the staff the direction that they...
Motion to give the, uh, that the staff move forward with the direction that was laid out within the workshop earlier this evening.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore, a second by Councilman Vaughn. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, Mr. Kunkie. Okay, we're down to reports. Pasha?
No reports.
No reports. Bob?
Sir, uh, I've got a couple of things tonight. Uh, this Saturday, we have a great family event. It's gonna be out of the Toyota of Lewisville Railroad Park. It's our Spooktacular Trails. Starts at, uh, 5 o'clock, goes from 5 to 9. Uh, we'll have trick-or-treating for the kids. We've got, uh, our ever-popular Haunted Hay Ride that's gonna be out there. And also this year, we have, uh, a one-mile... And also this year, we have a one-mile monster run and a 5K glow run that's, that's gonna take place. So it's a great event. It's always popular. We've added a few things to it this year, and we're looking for good weather this year. We got rained out last year, but following along with the great weather we had at western days, we're gonna have great weather this Saturday.
Sounds great.
The other thing I'd like to mention is in relation to the Vision 2025. If you remember during the discussions, there was a lot of interest in the trails throughout the community, and there was a lot of discussion about a trail running along Garden Ridge, starting at the Garden Ridge DCTA rail station and, and coming down through Garden Ridge. With that interest, we submitted a grant application May 30th for a grant for that trail. We have been notified that the grant has been approved, $1.5 million grant to go toward the construction of 4.2 miles of trail along the Garden Ridge corridor connecting to Valley Parkway and down to the Civic Circle complex.
Sounds wonderful. And I have to ask, 'cause I keep, I've been asked several times again, have you been able to get with Texas Park and Wildlife Department on the lake, maybe getting a biologist out here to see what's going on with the lack of fishing problems?
Yes, sir. I've asked him for a report.
Great.
And we just haven't received it yet.
I'm sure. Thank you very much, I appreciate that, Bob. Chief, I want to commend you on a, a great event that you and both the police department had out there at the opening of your fire station last Saturday. It was a wonderful time. I know both my mother and mother-in-law both just had a great time, and I, I gotta tell you, Chief, was, we were a little surprised, I guess, by the turnout. I mean, it was a little larger than you might have expected, and one of the, I understand one of your team members said, "Chief, we keep having this many people here, we might run out of hot dogs." And I understand your response was, "No, we won't. You'll go over to Sam's and buy some more."
And we did.
Three times you went to Sam's. Well, that's awesome. We appreciate it, appreciate all y'all did. Linda?
I just want to say that the police department is continuing its efforts with the premier neighborhood services program. They will be having some additional patrols on Halloween to keep everyone safe in the neighborhoods, and Jay probably has a little more information about it.
Keep out.
Sure, so Halloween, the kids enjoy getting out, but is also known sometimes as a time for vandalism, criminal mischief, those sorts of things. The occasional theft of candy from the kids, so we are putting out additional staffing Halloween night. I think we're bumping the numbers during the certain hours that are typically more heavy for that sort of thing by about 25%. So getting some extra eyes and ears out on the street watching for that. Also, just so you all know, this week is National School Bus Safety Week. You'll see some increased patrols in the school zones, watching primarily for people that are passing school buses while they're loading or unloading. So just wanted to get the message out there, you know, watch out for our kids, let's be safe around them, and, and don't pass those school buses when that stop arm is out.
Thank you very much. We do want to thank y'all for working with the neighborhoods on a one-on-one basis, along with the, the fire department and our code enforcement officers and going out into the neighborhood, and we appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you, sir. Carol?
Well, I don't have anything to report on the water yet. Hopefully, we'll get rain, but I do wanna make you aware of that we're still moving forward with our creek and drainage cleanup areas. We've targeted two, three more areas. You're gonna see some, this time of year, we're gonna try to get some of the right-of-way areas and some that's more visible, and then we'll start in our creeks when the weather gets a little cooler and it's not as busy down in the creeks with varmints, so. But we're gonna put together a list and target these. We've already identified about 12 locations, and we're gonna have before and after pictures that will be available for you, so we're gonna try to make a real visible difference very, very quickly for you, so you'll be looking forward to seeing those. Thank you.
Well, great, and it's a great project. We appreciate, appreciate all y'all are doing, and as you get those photos, maybe you can post them on our website, and on Mr. Conkey, help us get them posted there, and it'd be a good topic for everybody to see. Thank you very much. Mr. Conkey?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'd hope to have the final council report on western days for you today, but we're trying to verify a couple more revenue numbers. Frankly, they're bigger than we thought they'd be, so we want to make sure they're right. What I can tell you, earlier I shared with you that we had a record attendance of 25,564. Using that number and our onsite survey results and the revenue numbers that we know for a fact that we can verify, I can tell you that last year's event had a total estimated economic impact of about 1.2 million. This year, just looking at local business impact, not counting the event itself, it's 1.35, and we expect the event will top 2 million when we have the final economic impact.
That is awesome, great, and I'm sure next year, as we continue to build on it and we get the park open and have a little more flexibility with our vendors and spaces, it'll, it'll continue to grow. We appreciate all the work you've done on that.
If you can give us more sunshine, we'll give you another great event.
Well, y'all do a great job, whether it rains or shines, we appreciate it. Rinda? Paris?
Yes, sir. Just to give you a little report on construction, Mr. Solomon and staff in the Engineering Division have been working diligently on the Valley Ridge project. This will be the, the connection from Mill through Stockard Bottoms over to College. That is out. For bid right now, we'll be looking, anticipating a bid opening in about seven to 10 days from now, so we're, we're anticipating that. And Mr. Joyner in Development Services, or Neighborhood Services, is looking through a large number of applications for the neighborhood coordinator position that we're excited to have gotten in the 14, 15 budget, so we'll be going through that in the next several weeks, and hopefully setting up interviews and get that position filled and put them to work.
Sounds wonderful. Mr. Backus?
Yes, sir. Give you an update on the plaza, and to date, we have 11 change orders in place, which add approximately 88 days to the April 30th completion date. That was the original date. Extends this completion date for the contractor into July 31. There are additional change orders that we're working on currently and possibly some rain days. The new date, as presented by J.C. Commercial, is now the 24th of November. We currently have three situations we're working with the contractor on. First of all is a water wall. There are some issues there that we're working with him to resolve. The splash pad, if you went by the area today, this is where the kids' play area is. They will be removing the floor finish that they poured about two weeks ago. Did not meet our expectations and quality of work, so they will be removing that. Also, some additional flat work in the area in Wayne Ferguson Plaza. The lettering, that concrete area will most likely be replaced, as well as several other, what I call sidewalks or flat work. So we still are working with the project. The trees have been obtained and tagged, so we should not have that difficulty in the near future of obtaining those.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you staying on top of that. I know it has, it's been a, a challenge for you, and it's been an opportunity. So we do appreciate it, Mr. Backus. Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
No, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I got two quick things. First, the Louisville Morning Rotary will hold its fourth annual U.S. flag retirement ceremony at the Medical Center of Louisville Grand Theater Courtyard. That's gonna be Saturday, October 25th at 1:00 p.m. The theme of the event this year is World War II, and it includes a lot of our, our community groups, as well as our police and fire honor guards, so it's a, it's a great event. This is the fourth annual, and if you have an opportunity to come out at 1:00, please do so. The other item is I wanted to thank staff, specifically our, our parks, our police department, and of course, the EMTs for watching over me on that damn run this past Sunday. I actually, I did cover under my own power 13.1 miles, and did that in just over two and a half hours, so that was a lot of fun, and I'm really, nah, nah, nah. Be, be excited for Lila, because that was over 1,200 people that came out to run and get to experience Lake Park, Lila, and, and the dam. So it was an outstanding opportunity for Louisville, and I think it's just gonna get bigger. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Sounds great. I did notice you weren't using crutches or cane.
I'm kinda limping a little, though. Watch me.
Ms. Barron?
No, sir.
Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, Mayor. First of all, if you're paying attention on my right lapel, it says I voted, because early voting has begun for the November elections, midterms, and also some county judges and other positions that people should take an interest in. Early voting is at the old Anix Building or old library, whatever you wanna call it, Main and Civic Circle, continues this week, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on weekdays. Will be open Saturday, 7:00 to 7:00, and Sunday, 1:00 to 6:00, so a lot of convenient opportunities there. And again, the following week, Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 7:00, so even longer hours on Monday through Friday. MCL Grand, we have a stage show, the Disney's Little Mermaid Jr. It's an interesting title. November 6th through the 9th, there's a show on each one of those four days, and that's presented by the acting studio. We have a songwriters' challenge. This is something that occurs periodically in conjunction with the Visual Arts League's Friday Acoustic Jam, and the songwriters' challenge, quite often what they'll do is throw out a word or an idea, and everybody sits and writes different songs, and it's surprising what different concepts you get coming from that word or idea. And that'll be this Friday in the art gallery, or actually, it's probably gonna be in the recital hall, I'm guessing, at the MCL Grand, and starts at 7:00. We have a job fair conducted by Nebraska Furniture Mart Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. That's the 28th and 29th, so people looking for a job should definitely check that out. And we have a meeting right after that on Thursday for 35 Express, so this will be presented by Texas DOT and AGL, the constructors, so people who have an interest in I-35 and what's going on, definitely ought to go there. In the art gallery at the MCL Grand, the Quanta Parker exhibit continues through November 8th, and in the north gallery hallway, an exhibit by Visual Arts League called The Western Way also continues through November 8th. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
You bet. Councilman Vaughn?
Yes, sir. Couple of items I'd like to mention. One of them is Keep Louisville Beautiful is having their Trash Bash in November from 8:00 to 11:30, and I didn't write down the date. Anybody help me out?
Head, I saw the-
Well, anyway, you can go online or on the city's website, and they are looking for volunteers. And the other thing that I'd like to mention-
November 15th, 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m.
November 15th.
Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you very much, sir. And the other thing that I'd like to mention is that I was fortunate enough on October 15th to be part of a ribbon cutting for a program that is sponsored by the LISD school system, and it was presented with the help and support of the Louisville Area Chamber of Commerce. And it was the opening of their new Starfish Coffee Shop. And this coffee shop is located at the Purnell Support Center. And what it's about is helping handicapped young children learn a trade. They are doing their own baking, their cooking, and service, and servicing, and I thought it was just a wonderful program, absolutely wonderful. And in conjunction with that, they have opened a coffee shop, and it's at the Purnell Support Center at Purnell and Charles Street. And Monday through Friday, from 9:00 to 2:00, you can get fresh brewed coffee and teas and oven-baked cookies and muffins and things of that sort. And the prices are like a dollar to a dollar and a half. So I request, I would like to request that anybody that likes morning coffee, tea, whatever, to please stop by and support this program. I think it's an outstanding thing that they have done. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, one more thing. I'd actually like to back up to the city manager, because this week, we received quite an award from the American Planning Association, and I'd like for you to talk about that.
I'd be glad to. Yes, we were selected for top honors for our 2025 Vision Plan. That is a statewide designation that we have one, now one of the best plans in the state for our future, for future Louisville. And we do plan to work on a sub medal for a national award for our same program, so thank you, Councilman, for reminding me of that.
Thank you.
And certainly want to thank the Spirit of Heroes for coming tonight and honoring all the people that they honored today, and appreciate what they do for our community. I appreciate, Ray, you being here tonight, along with your chamber board members, and recognizing what the chamber does for our communities across this country. We appreciate what you've done here in our community, sir. And I want to say thank you also to all our team members who helped, I mentioned it earlier, helped with our high school homecoming parade. We had Chief Tittle was recognized as one of the former graduates and was recognized at the parade, and I can tell you that the Louisville High School tremendously appreciates what the city does in supporting, in their support. You know, they had, they were all, or a lot of them were wearing shirts that said 117 years of tradition, pride and tradition. So Louisville High School's been here for 117 years. Louisville is gonna celebrate, January, I believe, 15th, gonna celebrate its 90th year of existence. So you can see that the city's been built around at Louisville High School. But I'll tell you what, they are so proud of what our city has done to help them, and their principal stood up there, basically, I won't repeat all of his words, 'cause I don't want to offend any other city, but he basically said that all cities wish that they had the community involvement and the, the amenities that this city offers to the Louisville High School. So we want to thank each one of you that participated in that and made that happen for us. It was a great event. And with that, in accordance to Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending litigation, City of Louisville versus City of Farmers Branch, and Camelot Landfill, TX LP, calls number 412-CV-00782, United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, Sherman Division, Texas Commission on Environmental Equality, modification to municipal solid waste permit number 1312A, and Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, application to obtain municipal solid waste permit amendment, permit number 1312B, and Section 3, Section 551.072, property acquisition, and Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations will now convene in the closed We'll convene back in the regular session, councilors. The action be taken.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Motion adjourned by Councilman Ferguson, second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.